I'm getting text messages.
Oh, he just booted himself off.
Soon as we started.
He went to look at his phone and then he must have hit the wrong button. We got it live now. We'll just wait for President.
There he is.
Council President will live whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay, I'm back in. Okay, I'd like to call the February 2nd, 2021, North Providence Town Council Regular Meeting to order. Item number one on the agenda is acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion and possible action and vote with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes for meetings of January 12th, January 19th, and January 26th, 2021. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Amerigi. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any questions? There being none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two, President Pro Temp, discussion and possible vote on electing a president pro temp. Is there a nomination in order for President Pro Temp?
I'll nominate Kenny Amerigi.
Yeah, a motion's been made by Councilman Stefano Famigetti to nominate Councilman Kenny Amerigi. Is there any counter nominations? Is there any counter nominations? Is there any counter nominations? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Councilman Bacala?
Aye.
Councilman La Portio?
Aye.
Councilman Di Lorenzo?
Aye, aye.
Councilman Famigetti?
Aye.
Councilman Martone?
Aye.
Councilman Amerigi?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Councilman Amerigi has been elected President Pro Temp.
Thank you.
With that being said, I am have to sign off and Councilman Amerigi is going to take over. Thank you.
Enjoy, gentlemen.
Enjoy.
Right under the gun. Okay, so I will pick with Agenda Item Number Three, Utica, three abandonment kitchen continuance. Town Council should consider the approval of a petition to abandon Utica and Martin Streets submitted by 1601 Mineral Spring Ave LLC. This petition was advertised on June, I'm sorry, July 10th, 17th, and 24th, 2020, and continued to this date. We were forwarded an email from legal counsel for the, from the LLC. They are actually requesting another continuance, so I will just read it into the record. It reads, Dear Attorney Welch, as you recall, I represent the applicant, 1601 Mineral Spring LLC, who is scheduled to appear before the Town Council on February 2nd, 2021. The applicant and its consultants are in the process of finalizing the middle to the planning. Based on this, I respectfully request that the matter be, council be continued until the planning department slash board finalizes its decision. Thank you. Kindly contact me anytime. Sincerely, Mary B. Sacchi, Attorney at Law. Do I have a motion to continue this matter?
Zoom. Second.
This, I don't know who made the original motion, but I do have.
I did.
Stefano.
Okay, motion by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kenny, before you move on, I got a question. I just got a, I just got a text. I don't know why, from Jay from the Duke to Ralph. He can't get on. He's trying to get on. I don't know if you got a number or Stefano, somebody got a number for this kid?
Yeah, I did send it to him. His hand's raised. I think he might have got in.
He might have got in, okay.
Yeah, if his hand was raised. I did just send him the link on my phone.
Okay, so he's all, he's all set.
That's him. If he wants to text me and just let me know that he's in, then we can.
Yeah, I see him there, sir.
Okay, very good.
I didn't want to, I know he's up and I didn't want to shut him out, you know?
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Uh, so that takes us to number four, Lucky Cottage Inc., DBA Lucky Cottage. Summons was delivered to Kevin Lau, Registered Agent for Lucky Cottage Inc., DBA Lucky Cottage, located at 1610 Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BB liquor license for this establishment and the failure to complete the requirements to renew said license. Um, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this corporation?
I have a handwritten from Valentino Lombardi. Is that part of that?
That, that would be him, correct.
Okay, hold on one moment, please. Go ahead, Mr. Amerigi.
Uh, thank you, Ralph. Attorney Lombardi, thank you for joining us tonight on Lucky. Could you please provide us a? But thank you. Uh, could you provide us just a, um, maybe a brief update as to where we stand on this issue?
Yes, uh, again, my name is Valentino Lombardi, uh, office in, uh, Mineral Avenue, North Providence. I represent Lucky Cottage Inc., the principal, Kevin Lau, who has trouble getting on, uh, computer, so he asked me to, to get on phone. As you know, from the last meeting, he did comply with the, uh, the requirements concerning insurance and health with the Department of Health. The issue now is concerning the, the taxes and the payment for the, uh, license itself. Uh, as you know, he had, like other restaurants have had a great deal of problems, uh, this past year due to the COVID. He has had very little, uh, no in, 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 uh, in restaurant business and, and it's limited, limited, uh, takeout. And so he has, he has lost money on a regular basis. So he has been searching around trying to get some loans. He has, uh, applied for a, uh, small business loan which will tide him over, uh, to, to bring up the taxes to, to what they should be and pay for the licensing fee. And he just seeks a little more time from the council, uh, to be able to do this and, uh, and, and we would appreciate your assistance in this matter in any way.
Okay, Attorney Lombardi, Your Honor, thank you, uh, for that explanation. From what I understand, you have been in touch with our legal counsel, and I know you've been in touch with President Odiello and, and, um, speaking on behalf of myself and I believe the council. We do thank you for being transparent and, you know, for your client making every effort to, to get caught up as, uh, in as many creative ways as possible. So, uh, from what I understand in my discussions with some of the businesses, uh, we, um, we do have the ability, obviously, as a council to give you a little bit or give your client a little bit more time. Uh, and so we had, um, discussed perhaps another 60 days. Do you think if we were able to extend it, um, Councilman, I'm sorry, Counselor Lombardi, uh, do you think 60 days would be sufficient?
I believe so and I hope so because he is anxious to get, to get the business going again. And I, and I think with the, what's happening now with vaccines and everything, people will be more likely to, to start to, to go out. Maybe this will help not only his business but other businesses. So I, I think that's a reasonable extension.
So I can make that motion, but, uh, obviously I'll open it up to the council at large if anybody wants to make such a motion or, or discuss the matter further.
I'll make that motion, uh, to extend the, uh, to continue this matter for 60 days. Now we can put it on our, uh, April. No, April counted.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table right now to, uh, continue this matter through the April Town Council meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Di Lorenzo?
Yeah.
Okay, any, uh, questions, discussion?
Yes, uh, Ken, I have a question on that.
Please.
Counselor Lombardi, do we know if, if, uh, he's going for a, uh, an SBA type loan on that? Because sometimes they, they exceed 60 days. That's all. I just don't want to buck up against it and, and, and have a problem with SBA not getting through, uh, the pipeline quick enough. That's all.
He had told me that that's the, the loan that he's, uh, he's applying for, and he's already started the application process. So I would, he's, he's at least, uh, a quarter, if not halfway through it. But, uh, I'll know better, uh, when I talk to him and if, if, if we need more time, I will be getting in touch with.
Great, great. That, I just don't want to see it have to be locked up again, uh, if, if he needs an extension on that. That's all.
I understand that. I appreciate that.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, with regards to the motion on the table, uh, motion to continue this matter through the April Town Council meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, uh, Mr. Lombardi.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council.
Thank you.
Number five, Duang Panya LLC, DBA Green Basil Restaurant and Lounge. Summons was delivered, Sangham Duang, Duang Panya, Registered Agent for Duang Panya LLC, DBA Green Basil Restaurant and Bar located at 2086 Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BB liquor for this establishment and the failure to complete the requirements to renew said license. Do I have anyone here to speak on behalf of a Green Basil Restaurant and Lounge? Ralph, is there anyone?
Yeah, I have, uh, one saying. Hold on one moment, please.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, uh, my name is Sang Duang Panya. Um, I am the owner of Green Basil, uh, in North Providence. Uh, first off, thank you for the town and Town, Town Council for allowing me the opportunity to speak and, and apologize to you. The short, um, version of this is that, um, as of today, all of, uh, the taxes have been paid. Um, all of the documentation has been dropped off to taxation. So we're, uh, very close. Uh, we should be, uh, getting the clearance probably tomorrow, um, definitely this week. I'd like to go in a little bit if, if you would allow me to, um, on, on what happened and, and how we got to this situation. Is, is that okay?
If you're so inclined, sure.
Okay, okay. Um, well, first off, January 2020 started off, you know, um, with the separation from our accountant of five years due to embezzlement and, uh, he additionally put our company in the levy, uh, IRS levy for $30,000. Um, and then, you know, COVID struck. We were forced to close for several weeks. Um, and, you know, we were trying to stay afloat with the takeout service. Uh, in October, the IRS made that levy withdrawal from our bank account of $30,000, which crushed us because that was our reserve to stay afloat, um, you know, due to being closed and no indoor dining and no bar. So that's why we fell behind on the sales task, but like I, I said, um, yeah, we're all caught up. And we have been working with the Rhode Island Division of Taxation since September to clear that good standing for liquor license. And one of the major obstacles was related to the accounting issues because the accountant, um, did not complete the W2s. Um, and he was withholding tax payroll data, which, you know, we required to do W3 filings. Um, so we've got that done. Uh, the new accountant has sent that over. Um, I ran it over to taxation today right about 3 o'clock. Uh, so they have that. That was the only thing that they were waiting for. Um, so, uh, to, to make matters worse, my wife and I did catch COVID and that's why we closed, uh, the restaurants towards the end of Thanksgiving and most of December. But anyways, um, where we are right now is, uh, the taxes have been paid up. Um, all of the documents have been, uh, delivered to taxation. Uh, we're very close to getting that, uh, clearance for good standing. And all of the, uh, the requirements for, for the town has been, uh, sent in and has been paid for, you know, the, uh, excise tax. Uh, the check is already at the town. Uh, we're just waiting for that, uh, clearance certificate.
Uh, thank you for that explanation, Sang. And I, you know, I, just a, a brief word about the impact of COVID, but it seems like, you know, your issue was a lot.
Yes.
More onerous than that, and I, I give you a lot of credit for, for being paid up as of today. Um, as you noted, obviously it's not officially cleared, so I, I would like to entertain a motion, uh, to continue this to next one's meeting, just to, to build in, uh, you know, a little bit of a cushion for you, but it sounds like you're on the right track. So if anybody has a motion, I'd entertain that this time. Who was that? The Councilman La Portio make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to continue to the March meeting from Councilman La Portio, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any questions or discussion?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, all the, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. Councilman Di Lorenzo, I'm just going to keep saying you.
Yeah, it's okay.
My first rodeo.
President Pro Temp, it's dealer's choice, I guess, tonight. It's whatever you want.
My, my eyes are drawn to him. I don't know.
Yeah.
All right, so number six, we have Parma Bar and Grill LLC, DBA Parma Bar and Grill. Uh, all same, so we have summons was delivered to Laura Ashworth, Registered Agent for Parma Grill LLC, DBA Parma Bar and Grill located at 1449 Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BB liquor and entertainment licenses for this establishment, failure to complete the requirements to renew said licenses. Do I have anyone here on behalf of Parma?
Laura is here. I'm just bringing her in.
Okay, thank you, Ralph.
Can you hear us?
You can.
You say yes?
Yes, you can hear us?
Yes, yes.
All right. Yes, uh, we actually, um, like the last gentleman, we are actually just cut done paying up to date with the state taxes. Um, I think we've actually almost put in all the documentation we need. I have one reconciliation document going to, uh, the state, and then I should have a clearance letter by the end of the week, the latest.
Okay, um, and, and is that Dave speaking?
Yes, that's David. Yes.
Uh, Dave and Laura, thank you very much. Um, much like the last one, I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, just to build in some time and stand a motion to continue this matter to our March meeting.
So.
I believe a motion by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, we'll go with a, a second by Councilman Martone. I think he said it first. A, um, questions or discussion?
Yeah, one, one, uh, one question, Councilman. Uh, has the last page of the entertainment application been signed?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thanks.
I send your hands now.
I do. I have it.
Hey, Mary.
Hi, Emmy.
Thank you. So do I, uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Laura and Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven, uh, we have 780 Restaurant and Lounge LLC, DBA 787 Restaurant and Lounge. Summons was delivered to Liz Vasquez, Registered Agent for 787 Restaurant Lounge LLC, DBA 787 Restaurant Lounge located at 1270 Mineral Spring Ave, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BB liquor and entertainment licenses for this establishment and the failure to complete the requirements to renew said licenses. Do I have every, uh, anyone from 787?
Anyone from 787? Can you raise your hand if you're here? I can go and raise in their hands, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ralph. So from, from the last meeting, if I recall, they, they did in fact, uh, or they were able to, well, actually, you know what? Let me ask, Mary Ann or Troy, um, did they hand in their paperwork at least for the health and safety license?
They did that, and I think that the only thing they're missing now is a clearance of state taxes, which they said they paid and the state told them it would take a little time for their website to up, update and show us a clearance. So that's what they last told me on, uh, Friday.
Um, I, I'm certainly going to open this up for discussion because I'm a little disappointed that there's nobody here from 787, considering quite a, a long and not illustrious history of, of dealing with them with some issues regarding the neighborhood. Um, you know, I would, I'd be inclined to extend the same courtesies to continue them to march. But like I said, I, I mean, I would like to open the floor to anybody who'd like to.
If I may, Kenny.
Councilman Famigetti?
Yeah, so as you alluded to, this has been a repetitive issue that we're faced with. I was actually looking at prior meeting minutes and, you know, when this, uh, when we dealt with this last, uh, meeting, we would, we were rehashing old issues and old, um, concerns that we had with respect to this bar. And there are a couple of people who may be in the room tonight, neighbors who want to express their concerns. Um, and, you know, Kenny and I, we've, and actually other council people have heard over and over again about the noise issues, the parking lot issues, all of which we warned this establishment about in the past. Um, now, those issues are not on tonight's agenda, so we can't get into those in depth. But what I do think is, given that we don't have the, um, clearance of the state taxes and given these issues that we are faced with, um, the repetitive issues with the noise and the parking lot issues, I'd like to make a motion that we summons the license holder to appear at a special meeting within a week or two before this council to address the neighborhood issues. And at that point, we can have the neighbors address those as well. Uh, but, and, uh, again, to address the neighborhood issues, the noise issues, and also notify the police department to be there so we can discuss their liquor and entertainment licenses in the future thereof.
Okay, so, excuse me, so I have a motion made by Councilman Famigetti to, um, call a special meetings, meeting with summons provided to 787 to address um, the ongoing complaints of the neighborhood and with also a request that the representatives from the North Providence Police Department attend said meeting. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala. On that particular motion, do I have any questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Councilman Di Lorenzo?
Okay, um, is, is this 787, uh, I'll ask Mary Ann, I guess, or Troy. Um, are they behind on the taxes to the town?
No, they've paid the taxes to the town.
So the, they have paid the taxes to the town?
The only one that I don't have a clearance on out of yet is the state taxes. Excuse me.
Okay, but as far as the town, it's kind of the taxes are paid.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me. Questions or comments?
Councilman Amerigi, there's a gentleman, uh, that has his hand raised, Vincent Pezza. Would he be a representative to DNO?
Uh, Vincent Pezza would, would be a neighbor of the restaurant. I, I certainly would like to maybe let him speak on behalf of the neighborhood as a whole, um, just because we are going to have the special meeting. So if Mr. Pezza would like to, you know, put in his two cents, I, I certainly grant that.
I'm bringing him in then. Can you hear us, Mr. Pezza? He's unmuted.
Mr. Pezza? Ralph, is there anyone else, um, raising their hand or trying to speak?
No, sir. He's here. He just, he's on, he's unmuted, but.
There he is.
I, I see him now. Mr. Pezza, can you hear us? Can't hear you.
He's not muted. I don't think his volume's up, but he's not, we should be hearing him. He's not muted.
It's also a mute button.
That's me trying to mute.
You should be able to hear us now.
I don't know if he has a microphone attached. It might be an issue.
It could be it.
I think he can hear Russ. We just couldn't hear him. I think it's his speaker on, on his, his end.
Well, like I said, I, I mean, I don't want to hold this meeting up. Uh, Mr. Pezza, if you can hear us, we are going to have a special meeting within the next couple of weeks, at which we are going to invite all the, uh, residents of that neighborhood back, back behind the restaurant to come and speak. Um, and we will address all of the issues that the neighbors have brought up at that time. Um, so unless Mr. Pezza can say anything, I, I'd like to hold a vote on that.
Can I, can I ask a, a quick question?
Sure.
So the, the general complaints are coming from behind the, the building?
Correct, the vast majority of them.
So can we, assuming this, this meeting is going to not be, uh, we're going to have a weekend in between this meeting and whatever, at least one weekend between this meeting and the next meeting. Can we, can we ask the police? I'm not sure. They may have already done this, but can we ask the police to go by, um, uh, on a couple of occasions maybe and, and check, uh, in front of the building and behind the building because, based on my looking at the information we received from the police department, they're telling a different story than what the neighbors are telling. So I don't know if the police are stopping in front of the building and maybe it's not an issue in front of the building, or if they're actually going behind the building. So what, what I would request is if we could, I don't know, communicate to the police somehow, that that when they do check the place, they check behind the building because I'm not seeing, I, I guess, based on, on what, uh, you guys are saying, it sounds like there's a lot of complaints, but based on what I saw in the police reports, it doesn't, that something's not lining up. So I'm not sure if it's a, it's an issue as to where the music's coming from, but.
So Councilman Martone, just by way of history, I mean, that, that has been an issue in the past. Um, some of the times the readings were taken in front of the building and, and maybe not taken once the music really, um, kind of amplified as the night went on. So I would say this, either, either Councilman Famigetti, uh, could amend his motion to add that the, uh, take a series of readings before that meeting, or perhaps you want to make a separate motion, uh, Councilman Martone specifically about that?
Yeah, I, I, it doesn't, either way, it's fine with me. I don't even need readings. I, I, I honestly, I'd rather just have their observations.
Well, we are going to invite them to the meeting, so maybe we can just reach out to them informally and ask that they, they make some, um, do some de-runs during different times of the night and.
Exactly, and, and different, and different parts of, either front, the back, the side, that kind of thing. Yeah.
I agree. Ken, I think we're going to need a couple of different motions here. So the motion on the floor, as you know, was, as far as the special council meeting, so let's vote on that first, then we can move forward with another second. I, I do have a second one.
Yes, exactly. So can I have a, a vote on the first motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. There'll be a special meeting which will summon, the, um, Councilman Famigetti, you have a second motion?
Yes, and also, uh, I would like to make a motion that, uh, we also summons the license holder of 787 to, uh, that same, um, special meeting to address the tax issues as well.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman La Portio. Uh, any, uh, discussion or questions on that?
I, I got a question. I'm sorry, uh, Stefano. Wh- what did you just say about the second amendment, a second?
So essentially, yeah, so essentially tonight, yeah, so essentially tonight, where we have them listed as not in compliance with state taxes, so we're not voting on anything like we did with the other restaurants. We've extended their ability to get them. So basically at the next Town Council meeting, when we do summons them in regarding the neighborhood issues, we're also basically just continuing this issue to that's, uh, that's a special meeting as well, so that way both issues will be addressed.
Okay.
Any, uh, further comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much, guys. Uh, number on the agenda.
Kenny?
Yes, sir.
Do we want to do, Mario, did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion at least. Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion. Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion just, just so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle, that we send a communication to the police asking them to, uh, monitor the establishment, um, at different points of the evening. Um, and, and also that they monitor, uh, and, and make some observations as to the level of the music, uh, around all sides of the building, not just the front. Uh, but by sometime between now and whenever our, our special meeting is.
A motion on the floor by Councilman Martone. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by, we'll say, La Portio, it looked like he said something. Uh, any discussion or question?
All time.
Question.
All those in favor? Oh, you have a question?
I, yeah, I, I do. I have a question. Mario, what, uh, by what means can we do that? I mean, uh, is the decibel meter not sufficient or? Because the, the subwoofer i- is, is a thumping noise and it's registered on a decibel meter, but not nearly as, uh, audible as, as, as if it's a high frequency.
Yeah, I mean, my preference would be that i- if, if they have the ability to take decimal readings, they can, but I'm really more interested in their observations, you know, so if they, if they pull up to the establishment, uh, and they can hear it from, you know, uh, Ricotti's Sandwich Shop up the street, you know, I think that's a problem. Or if they go into the back and they can hear, you know, uh, three blocks into the neighborhood, I think, you know, I, I'm, I'm more, I'm more interested in their observations, you know, how loud is it, where they can hear it from, that kind of thing.
Yeah, uh, if I can add also, uh, on that, uh, not being in my district, but running into people that are in the neighborhood, uh, i- i- the observation in the back of the building of people, uh, urinating and people being loitering after the restaurant is closed, which I'm assuming is going to be 1 o'clock now on the weekend, uh, that should be observed as well, correct?
Yeah, I, the Councilman La Portio, this, this literally goes back to when they opened the doors. So I think if we get the right officers there, they're going to tell us some stories and, and we, they definitely need to, I, I agree, take some observations between now and the special meeting in a couple.
I, I, I got a question.
Councilman Di Lorenzo?
Because, because they've, they've been up to us now quite a few times, Kenny. Um, and, uh, there are some issues there and. And there are some issues there and, but I I I got a question for for everybody, I guess. Has there been, or have they hired, or has anybody put, want to put a police officer there on a Friday or a Saturday night? I mean, not not just for a drive-by, but for for security purposes, for the neighbors' purposes.
So what's what's interesting is, and as I mentioned before, I did some research, I looked back at the meeting minutes. And that was one of the first things that they told us they were going to do is put a security in the back parking lot. And clearly, that's not the case.
Their security, I'm talking about our police department.
Right, and I think that, you know, maybe that can kind of piggyback off what Mario says. But the point I'm trying to make too, Steve, is that the this has been, we saw this coming right from the get-go. You know, we all worked together to say, you know, you're in a residential area. Your parking lot is in front of people's houses. You should make sure that you have the proper means to police that area. Now it's falling on us, which I agree with you, that maybe, again, we could piggyback that off of what Mario's saying. That maybe our police department does take a stronger or a closer look at what's going on in that parking lot. At those peak hours. So I agree with you.
So if I will not.
I I remember that, I'm sorry, Steve, I remember Stefano that when they first came in front of us, that security is going to be a big issue for them. Because we all asked that question. We were very diligent on that with them. Evidently, that hasn't happened, and there's an issue there.
But with that being said, I think the security inside, inside the building, I don't think there's someone posted, you know, outside in the back and the front.
Well, we, well, we were very adamant about even outside the building because it's been an ongoing thing, you know.
All right, so so guys, we're we're, hold on, hold on. This isn't even on the agenda, and I'm not, I'm not. There's still short shrift. We, if we discuss, we could talk the next four hours about everything that we've experienced there. So. We're gonna have a meeting literally just on this. Every observation that you guys have made is unfortunately, are unfortunately true. So let's just, we're gonna summons them and we'll discuss it all with them because unfortunately, that's what needs to be done. So. Is there something that has not been voted on, I believe?
Yes, Mario's motion.
Okay, so do all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, thank you. Next issue, number eight, Jar's Pub. LLC DBA, the Duke Kitchen and Spirits. Summon was delivered to Joseph J. Arroyo, the third registered agent for Jar's Pub LLC. DBA, the Duke Kitchen Spirits located at eighteen thirty-nine Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. For a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV liquor and entertainment licenses for this establishment and the fifth. To complete the requirements to renew said licenses. Do I have a representative from the Duke?
Yes, this is Joseph J. Arroyo, the third.
JJ, welcome. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Like you, I did drop off the last letter of the entertainment license today to Troy. As far as the tax situation's going, that was all supposed to be taken care of by today, but the snowstorm held that up. So by the end of the week, all that will be done.
Okay, so when you say by the end of the week, do you mean everything will be submitted, or has any of it been submitted regarding?
It's all been submitted. I'm actually waiting for one department to get back to me with interest and penalties. I have it for the main sales tax and food and beverage tax, and everything's gonna be submitted. And the only other thing that is holding me up is the reconciliation from two thousand nineteen. So my accountant's on top of that, and that's pretty much all I got left.
And yeah, I I assume JJ that you're speaking about the state, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and from our clerk's office, can you verify that that he has submitted what you've asked for?
He has submitted everything. All that is left are the clearance of state and the clearance of town taxes.
And Mr. Arroyo, if we give you a continuance of thirty days, you expect that that will be enough?
Yes, that'll be more than enough.
Do I have a motion?
So move, so move.
I have a motion by Councilman Familiati. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any debate discussion questions? All those in favor?
Is that thirty days, Mr. President?
It is, Mary Ann. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those opposed? Okay, the eyes have it. Number nine, COVID nineteen testing. Councilman Familiati requests a discussion. Will vote on COVID nineteen testing in Rhode Island DMAT slash Medical Reserve. Councilman?
Thank you. So I'll be very brief on this. Rhode Island DMAT Medical Reserve, they are nonprofit. They've been given COVID testing. To the population of Rhode Island for a number of months now at no cost. Chuck Pollack, who's on the school committee, actually brought this to my attention and. I spoke with the president of DMAT to see if, you know, maybe there was an opportunity. To help us in North Providence. So I did put this on the agenda to see if there's any fit, any linkage that we could make here. However, after speaking with the administration and Chief Silva. Not to my surprise, but we do have a pretty good game plan when it comes to COVID testing. And as well as vaccines, which will hopefully be rolling out a lot faster in the coming weeks. So that being said, I'd like to make a motion just to pass this off the agenda. I would like to thank Chuck Pollack for not only bringing this to my attention to hopefully help the town, but also for his volunteer work with the organization.
Absolutely. I have a motion to pass this matter off the agenda by Councilman Familiati. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Martone. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor? Matter has passed, thank you. Number ten, Dickinson Avenue. Councilman Amari requests discussion and possible vote on traffic and parking issues on Dickinson Avenue. So I had put this on the agenda, as you guys know. I'm sorry that I'm a pain with these Maryville issues, but on the side of Maryville closer to the Lincoln Line. Many of the streets there are just a little too narrow to accommodate parking on both sides of the street. And Dickinson is is something that's been, I think, on our radar for a few years. Familiati probably verify that, but on January twenty-fourth. Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, there was a fire at the corner of Dickinson. And another street there, and the emergency vehicles actually weren't able to get through. And it created, it made a bad situation worse. So rather than, you know, get into the weeds on this, obviously, if we do anything, we're gonna have to back it by ordinance. So sitting president tonight, I'm not sure if I can make the order, make that motion, but do I have a motion to refer this matter to ordinance?
So move.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Familiati. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bakala, any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Number eleven, Shiloh Gospel Temple. Councilman Amari requests discussion and possible vote regarding alleged noise issues at Shiloh Gospel. At nine seventy-four Charles Street. For those of you who are familiar with the area, that's a church literally at the corner of Volturno Street and Charles Street. I actually own a house on Volturno, used to live there. Church has been in operation for about three years now, I believe. Request a zoning variance to operate a church there. From what I recall, there were no objections. There was some discussion about. Parking issues. As a firsthand observer, and my my office is is right one block away. There's occasionally some parking issue on busier holidays and things of that nature. They do, you know, certainly do a lot with music and it can get loud at times, but we've never had any official complaints to my knowledge up until recently. The house right behind Volturno, I'm sorry, right behind the church on Volturno Street. Was vacant for some period of time. It was an estate sale, then some developers bought it. Fixed it up and they sold it to a young couple. And about a couple of weeks ago, I started receiving some phone calls, emails from that house complaining of noise. Beyond what they perceive to be acceptable, also beyond ours that they also perceive to be acceptable. The police have been called out a few times. And I, like I said, I spoke to them. I have spoke to Lieutenant Tom Jones, who was our new community police leader. And he's also spoken to the, I don't know if he's spoken to the homeowner, but he definitely has spoken to the pastor there as well. As I have as well. Lieutenant Jones and I have suggested that perhaps we put parties together for a meeting. To see if we can kind of rectify the issues without official action on the part of the council. But we did receive a, they may speak on this, but we did receive a letter. From the police today and and they had asked that we read it into the record. So if you would just give me a moment, I'd like to read Lieutenant Jones's letter into the record. Ralph, you don't, do you happen to have that? Letter by any chance?
I do not, sir.
Okay, let me just pull it up on my computer. Okay, you guys will just bear with me for a second. It reads, to whom it may concern. I recently had a request by Councilman Amari for me to look into a matter regarding nine seventy-four Charles Street, Shiloh Gospel Temple. I received this request on Friday, January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Councilman Amari inquired and asked if I'd be willing to assist in sending up a potential meeting. Between neighbors in the area and with leadership from the church for noise complaint issues. It should be noted that at that time, I was not aware or informed that this matter was already on the council agenda for Tuesday, February second, two thousand twenty-one. I learned this this afternoon when speaking with Colonel Martins on a separate issue. In reference to Councilman Familiati's request for information on an unrelated issue. For the record, prior to receiving this request from Councilman Amari, Reverend Eric Perry contacted my office on Wednesday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. And left a message seeking advice and assistance from the North Providence Police Department on the matter. I was not able to speak with him, leaving several messages for him to return my call. I was out of the office on Friday, January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Informed Councilman Amari on that day. On that Friday, I would follow back up with him once I have spoken with Reverend Perry. When I returned on Monday, February second, two thousand twenty-one, I left Reverend Perry another voice message. I was able to speak with him this morning. I have not yet responded back to Councilman Amari in reference to this request. At this time, my investigation is not complete, and I have not spoken to all parties involved. Therefore, the police department and the Office of Community Affairs is not in a position to provide further input until more information can be obtained. I'll stop there because the reference refers to seven eighty-seven, which we have already addressed. Ralph, is there anyone raising their hand or anyone here to speak on this issue?
No one has their hand. Oh, yeah, Lauren does stand by one moment.
Kenny, can I ask a question? Do you know what time are we talking about here for for loud music? Do you know?
So Lauren, I I think will fill you in, but.
Okay.
I've heard the ten o'clock seems to be right around the time that actually gets louder. So it's bowing as late as twelve, one AM. The police were out there as late as, I think, one or two AM one night, but I'll let her verify that with you. There was a week-long celebration, I believe, of of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, and and according to the pastor. That led to some later celebrations, and he's telling me that that this will not happen again. But again, obviously, we have to be. To them, but I think she could probably answer better.
Kenny, can I ask one question before she gets in? Is this, like, is this, is this choir music and people like doing that, or is it, is it noisy music? I mean, I'm serious. I mean. From a party or from a, you know, from some other activity.
It it's guitars and drums, and it's, and it's, I will admit, it is fairly loud. I could, I was about. Fifty yards away with my house when I lived on Volturno, and even during the winter with the windows closed on louder nights. We could feel the vibrations at least. So I I definitely don't want to downplay it and make it sound insignificant.
And even with COVID restrictions and everything else, it's still, right now, I'm assuming we're gonna hear, but I mean, it's.
Yeah, so I I would ask Ms. Bobola, I I moved out right before the shutdown, but it sounds like it is, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Lauren, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. So like was mentioned before, like, can, I am a new homeowner. We moved in, my husband and I, in November, end of October. From day one of us moving in, and when you mentioned the COVID, I actually want to bring that up first. Because our greeting from these people next door was, I couldn't believe how many cars. So I'm right next to them. They, the parking lot was full, there's, the street was full of cars up and down the street. I couldn't even bring my U-Haul. In front of the house. We had to try to find some of the people to move their vehicles. Because we couldn't bring it in, and the whole time we were wondering about, there were so many people there. That hasn't changed all throughout COVID. There's a lot of people there that gather all the time. Not that that's my big issue, whatever you want to gather during COVID, just stay away from me. But they are, and this has been since we've been there, so loud. They, if you look online where their hours are posted, it's not accurate. They, I think they have maybe Bible. Listed for Tuesday and then a gathering for Sunday morning and a Sunday night from eight to ten, and then a Saturday in the morning. That's not the case. They're there all the time. They're there a minimum of five days a week, if not the seven. They're there on the weekends, Friday, they're there all night. So they're supposed to start at seven to ten. They don't usually get there until eight, and they're there till one, two, and latest, and usually is the latest time, three o'clock in the morning. Where their music is playing the entire time. I haven't done anything for months about this, but I just got so frustrated because. That's all we hear in my entire house. My living room bounces to their music while I'm sitting on the couch. This, it's just crazy. I just don't. That's all they do. The music is always going. I ran out of options of what I could do. The cars are everywhere. They're always parked in front of my house as well. They're parked all on the street. And again, even that aside, it's the music that's my, aside of not being able to park in front of my own house except for the driveway. It's the music that's the problem. And then being there till three, and when they do finally start leaving at three in the morning, all these people. It's not like they're quietly leaving after they've had this music going the whole time. People are coming out and they're talking like it's two o'clock in the afternoon. They're shouting. I don't know what to say. And then summer's gonna come before you know it, and who's gonna open the windows? Because I feel like I'm in there with them from beginning until end. And I don't understand, like I said, I was looking at the hours. You want to end at ten, okay. So when I started calling the police about this. I was waiting until after eleven, till twelve at night to start calling. So, you know, I didn't want to be that person saying. Okay, well, it's ten o'clock on the dot. You need to be gone now. I gave them time. And still, that's not enough for them. I don't know what else to do. I've wanted to live in North Providence always. This is where I have been. I grew up here, and I wanted to live here. And for a first-time home buyer, I'm just so disappointed with what's going on there. I I just don't know what to do.
Thank you, Lauren. And again, I, you know, certainly don't want to make this about me, but I lived there the entire time. And I told your mother this, Lauren, you know.
And I have her here too.
Okay, so I I, this would have been addressed earlier, but literally nobody complained, and and I knew as soon as somebody moved into your house. Become an issue. I've been concerned with the parking. They park right up to the corner of the street. And getting, especially turning onto Charles Street from Volturno is dangerous. There's a lot of little kids that ride their bikes on the street. I think there's a lot of things that that need to be looked at. Lauren, would you? It sounds like the community police does want to, you know, have a meeting. Would you guys be open to meeting with them at the very least?
I would prefer not to because I don't know what there is to discuss, but. I mean, if if it's gonna show that I'm very serious about this being resolved, I guess I need to do what I need to do because.
I think, you know, from my perspective, especially as as somebody who's, you know, a mediator, even prior to I was an attorney. Sometimes just hearing it from the party who's affected will change somebody's actions. You think, you know, we all perceive that what we're doing isn't affecting others until we hear it from the people that are being affected. So. I personally think it's a good faith effort, but I I, like I said, I have some serious concerns about. What they can do to tailor their their actions to to fit into a neighborhood. And, you know, again, I don't want to monopolize this, and I'd like to open the floor. Questions for 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 the complainants and Councilman Di Lorenzo?
Kenny, I'm sorry for the problems you're going through, Lauren, but I have a question. This Shiloh Church, or whatever you want to call it, if it's going for five or six nights a week, is it part of the church? Or are they renting that out for parties, regular parties? There's a question.
From what I understand, it is the church. It is.
It is the church.
It is. They do Bible studies. They 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 didn't deny anything. Steve, when I spoke to them. The Reverend Eric Perry didn't deny any of the allegations. She, he just basically said he didn't think it was as loud as they were saying. That that was. That was it.
Kenny, can I have a?
Councilman Bakala.
Unless Steve's not, Steve, you're done?
Yeah, go ahead, Ronnie.
I I listen. Not knowing the ordinance around churches and all that stuff, I probably should have looked in the book before tonight and seen this in there. But it is that license, no matter what you, because obviously you went for variance and they had to get the church there in the beginning, right? Was there anything put in place as far as what time they need to be in there, or because it's a place of worship that? I mean, if they want, if they want to do things at five in the morning, because, you know, the sun's coming up, is that still okay? You know what I mean? I'm just asking from that point.
Oh, I would defer to legal, legal counsel on that. It never came before. Oh, I would defer to legal, legal counsel on that, it never came before the full town council went in front of zoning, but. Attorney Welch, is there any certain restrictions or that are just general, make sure that you're aware of?
Not generally speaking, I'll, I'll look up the decision and get back to the council, the council or Councilman Bakala on it. That's if they got to use variance at the zoning board, that decision would have been recorded with the clerk's office and we can research it tomorrow and circle back. With the council, I can email everybody of the copy of that decision, it probably would have been something in that decision more than a general loss, so to speak.
I mean, I, I don't want to stop anybody from, you know, worshiping, praying or doing whatever, you know, do whatever they want, but I mean, obviously at certain times. You are affecting everybody else in the neighborhood, so I'm just wondering if that's in place, so.
Thanks, thanks, Ronnie, another question, Kenny, if I can.
Go ahead.
Any liquor involved, has anybody seen liquor involved, is it, anything to do with that?
Lauren or Karen, have you seen anything?
Just a lot of weed smoking going on over there, but I know it's legal.
Well, not totally legal. So you do, so you're saying you smell marijuana there on a regular basis, by regular or?
From day one when we were, the day we were moving in and it reeked of weed.
And that's even with the doors closed?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Kenny, yeah, I have a couple of things. One is, I think even if, even though they're a church, I still think they, I know that there is. I, I believe there's an ordinance on the books that talks about noise. I thought it was when you're budding a residential area that, that noise has to cease at a certain time. So I, I can look into that, I, I'd be happy to look into that a little bit, but my other thing is, I personally would like to have. The Reverend or whoever it is come in because based on what you're saying, I have a lot of questions as far as what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this is, and, and I mean, maybe he'll answer every, all of them satisfactorily and, and I'm fine with that, but. I, I'd like to hear, you know, what, what's going on as far as. How he sees it and, and, and also. Yeah, I, I just like to know what's going on.
Yeah, to, to that end, and I certainly don't want to cut off the discussion, but what I was going to suggest at a certain point is. Since the police are asking for, for time to do a formal investigation, what I told Karen, which is Lauren's mother. When, when we have a, a formal investigation, if we have that police officer or officers. Then come testify to us that they're observing the same things and there's violations of ordinances, then we can take action. You know, Lauren, you did wait, you were very patient, but now I, I, you know, I would ask that you just be slick with us because. He's requesting, you know, he's only been informed of this, you just started calling the police the last couple of weeks. So I, I would like to know, are they violating noise ordinances, parking ordinances? Are they violating state law with regards to congregating? I would suggest, I would suppose, from my own observation, the answer is yes to all those things and we need to take, you know, the actions that are necessary, but. You know, I can't make motions right now, so I'll, I'll leave it to the group.
I, I would, I would make a motion that we continue this matter to our March meeting. I would also, as, as part of that motion, I would request that both the police and that our clerks send out. Correspondence to both the police and the Reverend or whoever is in charge of the church to appear at that meeting.
Do I have a second on that motion? Second, Councilman, Councilman Familiari, discussion, Councilman Di Lorenzo?
Yeah, I, I got a question, does the guy Perry, is the, the, does he own the building?
The church owns the building, they don't.
Okay, so, okay, so we want the owner of the building there as well.
That is the board of the church, yes, I think all the board members should be there to. Arios is my, my position.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll, I think I'll amend my motion to, to ask the correspondents include. Both the Reverend and the board members if, if there are board members or.
There are, yes. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, Council, Attorney Welch?
Go ahead, take the motion, I want to mention something after.
Well, I did, so motion has passed.
I was just going to suggest if the clerk could contact the zoning office and see. If there was a use variance granted on this property, because I just checked the, the land evidence records and I didn't see anything under either Shiloh. Or the former owner ZDS properties, it looks like Shiloh bought it in two thousand and eighteen. From ZDS properties, but I don't see anything recorded under the prior owner or the current owner for a use variance. So we may want to check the zoning on that as well, but for the next.
So Attorney Welch, to answer, to answer maybe the question that might be coming down the pike from, from Lauren and her mother. If there wasn't a proper use variance granted, what, what would then happen?
Well, we got it, well. Well, we still have, we still have to add zoning, what's it zoned for, obviously it's, it's, I would think along Charles Street, Councilman President. Is probably commercial village and I, we got to ask, we got to ask zoning if. Under the use tables, I can check that before the next meeting, does, does a church fit into a use table into that? Or do, do they need to do that on the, you know, state and federal law, are they exempt from that because they're a church? But I don't, I don't know that to be the case, but I think if they wasn't, the short answer is if there wasn't a use variance granted by the town. Then we have to either see if they fit into the current zoning for the use or are they exempt for other reasons? So, but we can research that, but I think we got to start with having the clerk contact them and see if there was a use variance, did they go before the zoning board? And I'm not saying for purposes of your residents there, I'm not saying that they had to go before that, it's just a good start to research that issue.
So we did take a vote and it did pass, but any final comment?
Kenny, I have a, a motion I'd like to make.
Right, Councilman?
Given the parking issues that are going on, I'd like to refer to the ordinance committee.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Motion second, if I, Councilman Bakala, any questions or discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion has passed, okay.
Kenny, can I, can I just say one, one other thing? Sorry, Marianne, when you reach out to me and if zoning gives you an answer prior to our next meeting, can you email that to us?
I certainly will.
See that before the next meeting if, if we can get it.
I, as soon as I get it, you'll have it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I'll just say, you know, imparting ladies, just stay in touch with me, Councilman Familiari. Stay patient, you waited this long, we're obviously taking this very seriously.
Is there anything else that you can do to help the situation?
I can't hear her.
Is there anything else that you can do to help the situation out as far as the neighborhood is concerned?
I can't hear her.
Yeah, so, so Karen, to answer your question, probably, I think you're asking, what I suggest is this. Any, anything that happens between now and next month's meeting, continue to call the police, continue to call me. Take photos, take video, just gain evidence and then if you want to speak to the neighbors, encourage them to be at the next month's meeting as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lauren, can you just state your last name, please, for the record?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Bobola.
Spell it, please.
B O B O L A.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies, next, next item on the agenda, number twelve. Ordinance introduction, discussion and possible vote to introduce ordinance. Twenty one dash zero zero one, an ordinance adopting and enacting a new code of ordinances for the town of North Providence, Rhode Island. Providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included there. Providing for the manner of amending such code and providing when such code in this ordinance shall become effective. Binder of codified code of ordinances was delivered with the agenda packets. I believe this is fairly self-explanatory, do I mark the procedurally, your motion to?
Motion, motion to advertise for public hearing next month.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Councilman Familiari, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martone, any questions or debate?
Yeah, no, I just have a question, Mark, is, is there, I mean, it says stuff was taken out. Is there, is there stuff that's actually taken out of there that, that, because I can't, I couldn't tell based on the binder that we got?
No, it, it isn't, Anthony Galone and I have been working on this for, and Marianne and Troy for quite a while.
Okay.
And the way we wound up with it was, I think what happened was is that the. Person who worked at the company that helped us assisted us, this was a contract that we put out for them to codify what we had on the books. And what happened was is that initially I think the woman misunderstood. What the, the responsibility was, and I think she's, she initially tried to start rewriting our code. And I, and I said, no, we just want you to codify what we have. And if the council wants to make any changes, we'll let you know and we'll pass subsequent ordinances, so I didn't. I, I saw the paper, paper electronic version, Councilman, I haven't looked at the binder yet, but I'll look and see what you're talking about. But maybe she's talking about stuff she removed that she added in in the beginning that she shouldn't have, is what I'm thinking.
Okay, thank you, any other questions?
Does it come with a tutor?
It's supposed to make it easier.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, that's it, Adam, did I take a vote on that, I don't remember?
Yes.
I did, all right, next, next item. Thirteen, board appointments, town council discussion and possible vote with regard to appointments to be made. To the following boards, two mayoral appointments. We have the planning board, which is accompanied by a letter from the mayor, as well as the police pension board, also accompanied by the mayor. I'll take each one in turn, first the planning board, this is the. Mayor Lombardi, dear Mr. President and honorable council members. I respectfully submit the name of Stephen Patassi to Robert Drive, North Providence, Rhode Island, oh two nine one one. As a candidate for an appointment to the North Providence Planning Board. Mr. Patassi will be assuming the rest of the term vacated by Nancy G. Sarabian. Whose term is set to expire in March twenty twenty-seven, thank you for consideration of my request, very truly yours, Charles Lombardi, Mayor. Do I have a motion to accept the mayor's appointment?
A move.
So moved. Motion made by Councilman Martone, seconded by Councilman Bakala, any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the second mayoral appointment. Is for the police pension board, we have, dear Mr. President and honorable council members. I submit to this honorable council the name of Lawrence LaFauci, Seven Robbins Way, North Providence, Rhode Island, oh two nine one one. For appointment as a member to the police pension board. This appointment is for an indefinite term, the term was vacated by Joseph Papaselli, who verbally resigned from this position. Thank you for consideration of my request, very truly yours, Charles Lombardi, Mayor. We have a motion to approve this appointment.
So moved.
Motion is made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Laportio, all those, any questions or discussions? No, there being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Number four, fourteen, joint pole location, discussion and possible vote with regard to. Approval by the town council of a petition from Verizon, New England and National Grid. For work on a joint pole location on Colonial Drive, you have a letter from, sent to season your packet. Do I have a motion to approve the joint pole location?
A move.
A motion to be made by Councilman Martone, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bakala, any questions or discussion? There being none. Do I have a vote on this issue, all those in favor? All those opposed, ayes have it, number fifteen, claims committee report. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the claims committee report to be presented by. Councilman and new chairman Ronald Bakala.
Thank you, President Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Mark, if I make any mistakes, just let me know. The claims committee met on January twenty-sixth at five P M. Members present were myself, Councilman Di Lorenzo and Councilman Martone. The first one was a lawsuit to, against the town from a Michael Zachagenini. We sent this to Anthony Galone, the town solicitor. Cause that's way above our pay rate. The next one is from Matthew Pierce, one oh nine Stella Drive. That was in excess of ten thousand dollars, so we sent that to Mr. Galone also. The third one was a sewer backup from Mr. And Mrs. Ronald Volante. Twenty-seven Maple Crest Avenue. Excuse me, gentlemen. The asking claim was twenty-nine hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy cents, the recommended payment was twenty-four thirty-three seventy. With all of that, I'd like to make a motion to accept the claims report as submitted with our recommendations.
So moved. I have a motion by Councilman Bakala, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any question, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, last but not least, number sixteen, tax abatements under one thousand dollars. Town council discussion in action, possible vote for the approval of the list of tax abatements under one thousand dollars received from the taxes. In the amount of seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-three cents bill of state and sixty-four seventy-eight for tangibles. Do I have a motion to accept the abatement or approve the payment? Who was that motion by?
The, so moved, Kenny, all right.
A motion made by Councilman Martone, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bakala, all those in, discussion, questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. So moved.
Moved and seconded, meeting is adjourned, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Kenny, good job, Kenny, good job.
Thank you.
Good job, Kenny.
Have a good night, guys.
Night, everybody.